All right, we will call the meeting to orders. Mike, can we get you to do these pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next, we got the agenda approval. Is there any changes we need to make on the agenda that you're aware of?
I would like to remove the executive session with the end of this session.
Okay. So, what do you say about the executive session?
Just remove it.
Oh, remove the executive session? Somebody will make a motion to that effect?
I make a motion to amend our August 1 agenda to eliminate number nine, the executive session.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. All in favor, let me know, and I will raise you right here. Okay, unanimous? Next, we got the, oh, well, see now, the approval of the agenda. Anybody want to make a motion on the agenda approval? Would that be removed from the agenda? Is there any other motions on the agenda approval?
Actually, if we can, I'd like to add to seven C for discussion on how to proceed. I need direction from the council on how to proceed with the police department.
Okay.
Okay. Make a motion to add seven C for direction, clarity, and what to do regarding the police.
Okay, we have a motion from Mike. Do we have a second?
I'll say it, Mike.
Okay, all in favor, let me know, and I will raise you right here. Unanimous? Okay.
The council agenda is changing.
That's what we're trying to do. That's what we're trying to do is get an adoption of the agenda. Is there any other motions to change the agenda anyway? Okay, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as intended.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. All in favor, let me know, and I will raise you right here. Unanimous? All righty. Next, we have the minute approval from the July 2007 meeting. If you don't remember, number four, there's copies of the minutes there. Has everybody had a chance to look it over? Anybody want to make any amendments to that, to that minute copy? Yes, Mike?
I'd like to make an amendment to the second page, which is item number five, Reports from Committees and Departments. There's a sentence in here that I think it needs a little more clarity. And I'll read out loud this first paragraph, third sentence. Mr. Hadlin disagreed stating the building use had changed from public to private will need to be co-compliant. It should read, Mr. Hadlin disagreed stating the building use had changed from private meeting space to public recreational use and will need to be co-compliant. So, I just added in private meeting space and public recreational use. It's more than just a public-private difference. It's the uses were changed in the building, and I'd like to add it on the record.
Okay, you've got that amended on the public record copy there, right? Does anybody see anything else? Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes, if male, other than that portion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor, let me know, and I will raise you right here. Okay, next, we have the city manager report by Miranda.
Okay. First, we have maintenance. As a response to the request of the residents on Cherokee Avenue during the last meeting, Joey has placed gravel on several of the driveways to allow them easier access inside the, in the driveways. We have also completed clearing in and around the culverts on Cherokee Avenue, and we are currently working on getting pricing from local companies to come out and flush the buries from all the culverts on Hillside Street and Cherokee Avenue in an effort to better maintain the area that way until we can get a long-term fix figured out. I would also like to thank Joey for his quick response and cleanup during the storm on 7/21. There was a lot of downed trees in the area, so he did really good with that. Also, I'd like to thank John Montagnan for assisting during the storm and covering, assisting Joey in covering the windows at the community center. Number two is the dumpster rental. The dumpster rental cleanup week was a complete success, but we had a lot of positive feedback from that. In the future, I'd like to look at maybe creating a regular cleanup program to help benefit some of these people that like, who have to continue to clean up.
How many dumpster loads did we get?
We got two. I was hoping she would send me how much the weight was, so it'd be kind of a thing, but I didn't get that today. I would also like to thank Mike and Dr. Hadlin for volunteering to help with the dumpster project. During the month of July for the police department, they responded to 11 calls, all of which included but not limited to criminal trespass, extra patrols, street hazards, noise, and others. But regretfully, I have to report that on Friday, August 5, 2016, will be Chief Brule's last day with the City of Nelson. So far, he's been a valuable part of our staff and an asset to the community during his employment here, and I would like to wish him the best of luck with his future endeavors. Number four, Cherokee Avenue Drainage Project. We have received survey maps of Cherokee Avenue, Spring Street, School Street, Dogwood Pass, and Ednison Field area. They are currently on display in the hallway if anybody would like to look at them. In discussion with the city engineer, it seems that he is suggesting we address Kennesaw Avenue, the bottom of the drainage basin, and before we focus on the top, which would be Cherokee Avenue, and work away from there. While doing so, we would continue to work on general maintenance to the drainage system already in place on Hillside Street and Cherokee Avenue. I'd also like to throw in there that I had a resident contact me today that is wanting to do a yard sale September the 10th, and she's looking to see if we could incorporate some sort of advertisement for the citywide yard sale. Just something for you guys to think about upcoming work session. Community Center. We have recently had Heritage Home inspections, do a complete inspection on the community center. Copies are available to the public upon request. In the report, the inspector points out many of the code violations that would need to be addressed. The cracked floor joists, improper headroom on the stairs, improper existing insulation, cracks in the foundation, problems with the ADA compliance, and improper grading in drainage. During the storms on 7/21, the community center was flooded. We will need to consider installation of gutters in the near future to collect rainwater and divert it away from the building. I also recommend adding that to the community center, or adding the community center to this month's work session to be discussed. Number six, the walking trail. The construction company has started the construction of the four bridges along the walking trail, two of which are already completed and look great. The construction of the bridges should be completed in the next few days entirely, but we hope to have the trail back open by next Monday. There's a good bit of mulch that's got to be replaced, so it may take a few days. MAXIS Engineering, an update on where we stand with that. If the hydrology study is approved, we should have a preliminary study completed by the engineer, and he would be here on the work session for August to discuss what he thinks would be a good way to address the issues. And that work session would be 8/18/2016.
8/18.
Is it going to be 7 o'clock also?
Yes.
Yes, Mike? City manager, a comment on the walking trail?
Uh huh.
No, no, you or the rest of the public were aware. It was an article in the Cherokee Ledger News, July 27th, and it was tied to the results are in, walking trails, number one need. They had done a survey, 1,800 people, trying to get their votes on what they wanted to do in Parks and Recreation. And it's kind of interesting, the top five most needed programs voted by Cherokee County residents put trails as number one in terms of their interest. And they ask another question of whether compared to schools, fire employees, and recreation, Parks Department, Parks Department importance to the community. And they had 90% of people said, responded to the survey, said yes, that Parks and Recreation is just as important as schools, fire, and police protection. They said it was their highest result of company, by their company that did the survey that has ever been received by them regards to parks. I go through all that.
I risk the same argument.
Yeah. And what I think, what I can get out of it is that we are right on target in making improvements to our trails. And certainly in Cherokee County, it sounds like it's a pretty high priority. So, good decisions on our part.
Yes?
Just a funny story. I was submitting my resume to someone for employment, and I had put on there that I was in Nelson City Council, and they apparently don't read the papers, although they were from Hall County, justifiably. So, there was nothing negative. However, they did mention that they were driving through here and that they decided to stop at a walking trail in Nelson, and they had raved about how it was kind of like in the woods and shaded in Nelson because a lot of their walking trails out there are all in the concrete, out in the hot sun, and they can't use them. So, I was excited, just figured I'd mention that, and they live in Hall County, so.
I got a story, too. I got an email today. Somebody was telling me how excited they are about the new burgess on the walking trail. So, yeah, a lot of positive comments about it.
All righty. Anybody else want to comment on the city manager's report? Okay, next, we go into the old business. Number 6A, we have specs, marble building specs, demolition proposal. And that's, and you're going to provide that, is that correct, Miranda?
Yes. In your packet, you'll see that the proposal that the engineer sent over in order to do the bid specs for the demolition of the marble building. I just need the council to provide me with direction on how to move forward or not.
Okay, any comments?
I can't see now, sorry. I'm going to raise this hand, I'm sorry. I can't see my end over here. I had looked these over, and I was shocked by the amount of money that it would cost. And there was a part of me that was really, I guess, for this because I want to make sure that things are done correctly in light of the fact that we struggle with securing the appropriate information licensing and all that other stuff when we got the bids the first time around. I mean, we were just back and forth with the companies because we didn't provide the specifics. But Miranda had did some research as to what other cities did and had found some documentation through, I guess, the other cities as well as the GMA. Miranda, are they in here, you haven't had a chance to get any of that?
I have, no.
All right, I just had a chance. She had emailed it for me to look over, and I think it's a really good idea because it would save us the money, the $7,500 that's listed on this estimate, but it covers everything that we want done, so we don't have to go back and forth. She also created a packet that they would have to fill out in order to even bid on the project, so they would know fully in detail what kind of, you can explain it more, Miranda. You created that piece of art.
Yeah, well, it would, basically, they would have to fill out all their stuff and then submit the documents, their insurance, their certifications, and so on. And also, I think that it would be beneficial to have them submit a plan, a demolition plan, that states what they are going to do ahead of time. That way, once we get the bids in, we can kind of compare what company's going to do what and have their understanding of what kind of, you know, a little bit more.
So, basically, we would use the efforts of what the other cities have done and copy that to you, sure, the city of Nelson, and you, those cities, there'd be no problem. So, we saved us $7,500.
And I've discussed it with David as well, and I think that between his knowledge of construction, I think, a little bit from research, but.
Any comments? You agree to that?
Yeah, yeah, so it'd be a lot cheaper if we used that money somewhere else.
Well, you know, everybody just realized that we had a, you opened the bids or sorted the bids when we put it out for demolition to begin with. Well, I'm talking to Miranda.
That was Lou.
No, Miranda was here, too. You both talked about.
It was a fake, but I did go back through them, so I'm well aware.
Well, you had it together out there, you know. I mean, it's separate amount. And we had bids of less than $20,000 pared down and made it plain, so.
She rejected, remember the, she said, when she did her due diligence, that was Lou.
Well, she's a lot less committed.
Yeah, but when she reviewed.
Oh, no, she wasn't talking, he's not talking about Lou rejected. The original, the one proposal that we accepted, that we asked her to go ahead and get the information from, once she went to them with the information and what we wanted, they decided they didn't want to do it because they didn't want to have to provide all this other stuff where this packet that Miranda made that you looked over, right? And it has all the requirements in it, so it takes all the stress and labor and concern of, are they compliant?
We need to do that.
Yeah.
You know, we need to objectively, if we're going to tear the buildings down, we need to objectively deal with it and get it done. Yes, Mike?
So, I'm fine that we could save some money. The things that would concern me is, one of the sections he has on there was demolition oversight. And if, David, you can advise Miranda to her questions. I mean, if it's going good, there's no problem. But if something bingles, I'm not an engineer. I don't claim to know the answer, and I'm not in that business. So, we just need to be confident that we've got the resources to back ourselves up to answer or direct or tell them to stop doing this and to do this. And we're going to have to rely on you, I guess, to do that.
It's pretty simple, to me.
Yeah, well, if it's simple, I'm all for it. What I want to make sure is that we do it correctly from an engineering point of view, that we do it correctly from a legal point of view. In other words, the specifications are really the performance standards that we're going to measure them by. So, we have to put together something that clearly articulates what we're going to hold them accountable to. If we don't, they get to do whatever they want to do, and we don't have any recourse.
Right.
And I don't know what that, those things are. Then, the other part is that we follow the protocol. I don't want another audit finding that we didn't do bidding correctly, which we've had in the past. So, engineering, legal, and the protocols for, which are in our fiscal policy in terms of bids, we have to be, there's a whole process you have to go through, and they have to be received, and that, and that. And we can do that, I think. The only part that kind of bothers me, me, is the oversight out there. I'm just probably, I got on the computer and looked at what some of the people do. I mean, you could, you could spend a lot of money doing this stuff. I don't know that we need to, yeah, and I'm there. But I also don't want us to not manage the project. And I don't know how we're going to do that.
And also, we need to tear down the north end of the old, the old Doyle Cochran office or the old telephone office. Tear it off, that new facility over there. And wall that building off because there's no sense in tearing down the new building we once used for the police station.
Well, I'm fine with that, though. He says it needed to add $1,200 in asbestos survey is needed for the police station prior to demolition. I don't know how you want to deal with that.
The, we've got asbestos study down.
But it didn't do the police.
We'll call them back up here and get them to do the police bill. Let's save as much money as we can.
Yeah, I would say just hold the police station and just do the main one. I mean, it makes sense if they got the demolition stuff to do it all at once, but if we definitely got a program ready to go.
Yes?
Well, I was taking a look at the buildings and speaking with Miranda and looking over the pricing. And a lot of the people, because we don't want to, it's easier for them to destroy a whole building than it is to be neat and take down a part of it. And a lot of what was replaced over there, like the siding and all that they had replaced on the police building, if we carefully took that off, we could reuse it and not have to. But they're going to charge a lot of money to be careful about it. Like, they just want to knock it down and be done. They're not going to want to take off the siding or whatever. So, different scenarios, I thought, like if, I mean, Joey and help from the community or whatever have you, if we could try to do that work, like take off the siding ourselves or whatever it would be, or even just remove that section of the building in-house or, you know, so that it would be cheaper, just because, I mean, they're going to want to charge a lot of money to not damage the rest of that building, which I can understand, you know. And then, a lot of it, my concern is also the price would go up if we said, oh, well, by the way, save this and save that. We want you to tear it down, but we want you to be really careful and save all this stuff. So, I mean, that's just something else we can look into.
Well, what we can do is just leave it off in the beginning with it, and we'll just, we'll just have Joey do, you know, put a wall across from the inside. Of course, he'd have to, he'd probably have to get somebody to assist him with it. You know, all we can contract with a, with a contractor did the model shipment.
Can anybody make a comment on that, other than you?
No, we'll have the public comments after here, just a few, okay? And certainly, we appreciate your comments.
That your plastic siding ain't worth taking off saving. For some reason, you start taking it off from bust all the pieces because it's old, and there's no sense in trying to use it back. When you go to use it back from cracking bust, when you start nailing it back up, so you waste your money to try and save it.
Even the new stuff, the stuff they just put up, you think that'll crack as well? Because they had a lot of new stuff put on there when Chief Corey had that building redone. They fixed a lot of it and patched it up with the new stuff on that particular site.
And we fixed it all.
A lot of them blowed off again, but the problem is, I put that junk on my house. I wish I'd never done it, which is a hardy board. But you don't know these things till it's too late.
Well, basically, what we're trying to do is save what building we've got that, you know, the city, we've got a lot of money invested on that corner lot and that, and those two buildings from years ago, and, you know, we've got, is worth saving? Yes, Mike?
I'd make a suggestion that we focused on the marble, the main marble building, and maybe in the bidding structure, you could have an option to do the police building. And we can choose if we want to do both or just one or the other. Because it sounds like we're probably, if we're going to do the police building, we need to do the asbestos study in front of it. And we could postpone that to a later date. That way, we have the option, if we still want to do it, we can go ahead with it.
But you know, if you look back at the asbestos study, we, hey, I think he covered both buildings.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
I didn't know that. I didn't really, and, oh, you made a, oh, we need to go back and find out.
Well, it's in the report that we've got.
Yeah, we should, we have the files on there. Yeah, we can read it right now. Maybe it's already covered.
By the end rate, you know, after numerous, five, six, seven, eight years here, we need to get that dealt with.
I'm in. It's a code violation.
It's in bad.
It's our property.
Yeah.
Would you like a motion? Go ahead.
Yeah.
Tina, motion?
Oh, I just, I just turned around and tried to do something to give back to the city instead of them sitting there watching that building, put something up there, you know, future.
Let's make a motion to get her direction.
Okay.
Do you want us to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we ask the city manager to look at ways that we can in-house manage the demolition of the property and the permitting that's required and the development of bid specifications in the process for bidding.
And you can get those bid specifications from another community, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a second, let me know.
I'm second.
I have my second. All in favor, let me know, and I will raise you right here. Is it unanimous? So, we won't enter into the contract with MAXIS Engineering on the proposed building. And we will seek the copies of things from other municipalities that has already had, had spent many hours with attorneys developing that kind of stuff. Okay. Next, we have, now, this is from Barry Alpert. He's the Cherokee Avenue Engineer, Drawings and Proposals, Miranda.
Okay. The engineer has completed the, they've gotten the surveys completed, so ready to move on to the next phase of trying to address the citywide drainage issues. And in your packet, you will see the proposal that he suggests that we do the hydrology study, going back to trying to address the bottom basin before we address the top basin and kind of work our way up is what he's proposing.
So, you got any cost estimates here?
The hydrology study's estimate was $12,000 for the total hydrology.
That in addition to what we just paid to have the?
Yes, that will be in addition to the surveys. But that proposal will allow us to be able, will allow us to identify where the pipes are that are inadequate, and we can, it'll actually come with like little notes, I guess you'd say, to where we can address those certain issues as we get the money and as we can.
Is that single lot or is that just for that drainage?
It's for the whole Cherokee Avenue, Hillside, all of the drainage issues that end up coming down, too.
We just tied a survey, or?
It's the second step, basically, to the surface.
And we've got, we've got a drain pipe down there at the back side of the community building that we need to take out, which caused any flooding problems that we've had in that area. If we get into the replacement of that pipe underneath this old highway out here, David, how wide is the cut going to be there if you slope that like we have to and divert the branches down there? And are you going to spend $150,000 on that?
Yeah, easy.
You know, and $12,000, which we don't have any, we haven't had any drainage problems except right there and above the marble mill and the curb right there. And that's where we got stacked marble culverts that has collapsed. Or are we going to pay $12,000?
$12,000 is because we have people coming in from Cherokee who are upset the last two meetings. And it's also because fundamentally, you needed to do the survey to then do the hydrology. Remember, Dan always talked about we need to get the hydrology. So, once he's got the survey, he can determine what volume or the size of the pipes, and they may be correct.
Yeah, we've got a survey already that shows all the drops down through there. However, the survey that he did, it doesn't show the distance to the Cherokee County water line, which is one of our problems on that street, on Cherokee Avenue up there, and the Cherokee County water pipe is too close for us to ditch down through there and put culverts in. And he didn't address the size of that pipe, more to depth to the pipe.
But that's what the study would address.
What did our, how much we spent already?
It's $87.
$87. You don't think we could have got that done at the same time?
That was the survey. And you needed to do the survey to be able to calculate the slope and the volume for the hydrology. And so, it's the next step. I mean, you can't do it without the survey. And I was kind of interested in his comment that he wanted to go start at Kennesaw and work up the hill, which is kind of what you're saying. It is probably the key problem is down. And, you know, Thursday before last, we flooded again, so now we're into like.
Here we flood it the last year before. And that's, that's because the water comes across from Bowfield, comes down those steps, and it's not, we know we got the drainage problem there. We've talked about urban guttering, that side of the, of that street.
The problem is that we have some flooding issues. I mean, you saw the photos that are written, or, and they haven't seen them, but, what, a year ago? March and April? I mean, you saw the photos that are written, or, and they haven't seen them, but, what, a year ago, March and April? I mean, we flooded that whole area. That's what those waters.
The reason for that flooding was that Joey did not clean the pipe behind the community center. The pipe was almost collapsed and that's why the water built up right there. It's been running in there since 1923 when they revealed, filled the highway by.
Well, the bottom line is, we got to fix it. And so, we're going to get some engineering direction on what the problem is specifically. And then, we may or may not have to spend money, but it depends on what we find out in the study, so.
What's your opinion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Our whole problem is water related. And that was one of the things that I really strongly agreed with that about, was that we needed to get the hydrology studies because the house across from the one that flooded the last time, the one, it's a greenhouse on this side that flooded at that last storm. I was in the city when that happened and that was, that was good and flooded there as well. But we're trying to figure out the problem and we can, first of all, this is being covered by SPOST money. This is not like we're spending general fund money. We're spending money for projects that people are coming in here and they're upset about. And I don't, I want to fix something for the long term. We want to build the city, or we want to make the city better, or we want to add things to the city. No one's going to come in here and do that. And I'm not just thinking about tomorrow, or six months from now, or two years from now. I'm thinking about for the long term, that we're going to have to do it and do it right. And that, it's like a step process. And part of me looks at the price of $12,000 and it makes me break out in a cold sweat. But at the same time, I do think that the hydrology studies are going to be key to figure out all the drainage and water flow issues so that we can fix them and fix them right. I mean, we didn't go into it thinking it was going to be cheap. We may have to have some expensive fixes, but I would rather fix it right than keep putting Band-Aids on it and keep having people upset because their properties are flooding and, and things of that nature. Like I said, I mean, this is the one thing that I definitely think, I mean, I understand. I, I was all for the hydrology study first, but when I read through and kind of did some research, I understood why they had to do that other survey first so that, it's like a, it's like a multi-layer thing. They have to do this and then move on to this before they can do this, or it's not done correctly. So, I mean, it's, it's not coming out of the general fund. We have SPOST set aside to cover this, and if it's going to solve all these problems.
Have you checked with our, with our bookkeeper and see if we can pay for it on Cherokee SPOST?
Yes, because it'll be an upgrading of the drainage system. So, so basically, we'll be replacing everything, so it'll be a capital, capital project.
That does, we will not object to it. If we can pay for it with money that we've already got built up SPOST, we've only got $800,000.
It's an intercapital improvement program.
What's going to be the next step after the hydrology study?
He's going to recommend, define what he sees as the problem, the issues. And it may be that all we have to do is better maintenance, as the mayor said, and this existing system is adequate. Or it may be that we, like say, at Cherokee need to put some, what are the three polars that goes down?
Curve, curb, gut.
Well, before the curb, what is it?
Drop.
Drop, yeah. And though, and if he did, he would say they need to go here, one needs to go here, one needs to go over there. I mean, he would define his remedy. And it, and it may require in addition to that, some kind of curb or gutter, or may not. But he's, that's his job, is to tell us, here's the problem, here's my recommendation on what it would take to fix. And it may be, as you say, this is a long-term project. If it turns out bad, that we have to replace stuff, we've just got to schedule it over many years and keep throwing money at it until we get it solved. But I, I was kind of struck by his comment that he didn't want to start at Cherokee at the top. He wanted to start at Kennesaw, at the, which we've seen the worst of the flooding and work backwards. But to answer your question, he's going to do analysis of what the system needs in terms of pipe sizes, look at what we have, make an assessment. And, and from the discussion I had with him, like you see already, he wants us to aim initially at trying to purge, that's the right word, but make sure all the systems are working and there's no plugged up pipes and stuff on what we have. And then, if we need to, if we need to add more pipe, bigger pipe, that'd be his recommendation. And then, it's for us to see how we're going to be able to afford to do it over time.
But when he gets done this time, he's going to have the recommendations. It's not going to be another.
Right.
There's not another layer out of that crap.
No, that's what.
This is the end result.
Let me just, is that what you were talking about?
He said if we get their, we get the approval for the proposal for the hydrology study tonight, then should be by the work session of August, he will be able to come in and make his recommendations based upon that hydrology, his preliminary recommendations for the, based on the hydrology study.
You have checked, you have checked with our alter and she's going to allow us to pay out SPOST funds?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any further discussion?
I mean, I understand, I understand what your, your perspective too.
I want to say something this time, I mean, for $12,000.
Yeah, no, I agree. And that's why, that's why I think when Miranda had looked into it, she had gotten her perspective and then looked into it, A, to make sure SPOST can cover it, and B, to kind of see if it would help. And from all the research that she did, and then I kind of did some independently as well, just to figure out the drainage problems from other cities that have had drainage problems. And they went without this, and it was that missing step. I mean, they, they Band-Aid, they wound up Band-Aiding it and having to go back and do it again anyway.
I think once he gets the hydrology study, what he's saying is that he will be able to come in here and identify what are the problems, the problem areas. Say, if he has to do drawings and design work for Cherokee after we decide what we're going to do, that will ultimately cost us. Same goes with Kennesaw down here. If he says, okay, you don't have the right pipe, we need to replace it, we need to come up with a bigger plan, we need to replace all of this, then ultimately, if he has to do drawings on all of that, yes, the problem will be built. But after this hydrology study, he should be able to just identify what areas we need to address. So, I think that's the biggest thing, is figuring out what we need to address. And then, we can figure out how to address those, whether we want him to go on with more engineering or not.
Okay, then when he comes in, I'd like, if you, if you be sure, and call me, I'd like to speak to him before he starts on this. And be sure he understands the problem.
So, would this be a work session that he would come in?
Oh, he's going to have it done before the work session.
The work session at 8:18, he said he would have the preliminary hydrology study done and have some stuff. We would actually have him here presenting all of the work sessions.
Have him, of course, within the.
Right, and be able to discuss it and everything with him and ask him questions.
Yeah. And I don't mean to speak too much for him, and I don't really know what his next step is going to be. But that's as much as I understood, and I think you're right.
That's what him and I had discussed. That's, that's kind of the step process.
Are you comfortable with that? Yeah, I guess that's the next step we're going to have to do if you had.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve item 6B.
Okay, do we have a second?
Count second then.
Okay, all in favor, let me know, raise your right hand. At you, members. Next, we have the 2016 L-MIC project adoption.
Recently, you guys approved for me to go ahead and submit for the restrypping and then doing part of the engineering and then part of the, oh, patchwork down here. After reevaluating it, I thought to help out with the costs, the engineering costs to do Cherokee, we could use L-MIC funds. And also, as far as upgrading the drainage system, since last year for 2015's L-MIC, we did the other side of Cherokee Avenue. Maybe we could just do an extension this time, and it would cut down a little bit of the cost that's coming out of SPOST. So, I just need you to provide me with guidance as to whether if that's what you want to.
Okay, how much restrypping are we going to get for $900?
Basically, that is the whole city. That's including Dogwood Pass, Ray Mountain Road, Revs Mountain Road, North Avenue, Baker Street, Blue Ridge.
Well, that's okay.
Kennesaw.
Substantial amount.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a ton. It would be doing everything, so then, next time, we could just, we could kind of get on a schedule of doing it.
Does this come up to the, what's the amount? I'm sorry, I forgot what the L-MIC amount for this year is.
It's 17.5 with our 30% match, so it's a little bit over. But by doing this right here, we'll be able to use part of our SPOST as part of our match.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? You make a motion. Make a motion, we accept the recommendation for L-MIC for 2016. And we have a second?
One second.
All right. All in favor, let me know, raise your right hand. Approved unanimously. Okay, next, we have the USA Baseball Rental Agreement.
USA has come to us and they want to enter into an agreement, but they, they only do eight months out of the year. They pay $400 a month for four days of the week, two hours a day, which would be Monday through Thursday. And they want to sign this agreement, basically to cover them and cover us. So, they've got those reserved nights to use the field.
You said what days are that?
Be Monday through Thursday.
What about the person who's running on Wednesday?
He's no longer running it.
Okay.
So, and that would be running from March to October.
And have they decided, have they sent any approvals we need to make or? So, you've negotiated with them?
I, I've just reviewed the draft.
Just sort of give a chance to read it over?
Can I make a motion so we can discuss it?
Okay.
Sure.
Make a motion to approve item 6D, USA Baseball Rental Agreement approval.
Okay, for discussion, anybody have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead. So, that would be open for the community on the weekends?
Correct. Friday and on the weekends. And they also said that if, if we decided we were going to have like a community thing or something, that he would be more than willing to allow the city first come instead of, they would just avoid that day. And we are not to do, there's no kind of, they're going to do this, or we're going to do that. We just basically maintain it. It's part of the agreement. We are to make sure everything stays in operating order. But they are to adhere to the regular baseball rental guidelines, make sure the, the trash is cleaned up, you know, all of that good stuff. So, pretty straightforward.
Any further discussion?
And is that with a discount, Miranda?
Yes, this is by law, and then have a discount for renting it for four days a week.
And this is a youth team?
And it's definitely in there as listed as just for youth.
No person under the age of 18 years old should be allowed at the field without adult supervision? Is that what you're going to do?
Well, that's just part of the terms.
They've got, they've got a building over there in Cagle, in Cagle Town, where they have, apparently, they've got, I've been to that many times, where they've got a pretty good ton of people. They're established or trying to be established. But it's hard for them to find a place to park. Any further discussion?
The attorney did a good job reviewing it. Looking at it next to the city and actually might provide some revenue potentially.
Definitely, something we can put back into the parks, the baseball fields.
And I think they're, they're very, they're pleased to have the opportunity to use it. We're likewise pleased to have the.
Most definitely.
And get some value added from it.
Okay, do we have a motion?
We have a motion that's been seconded.
Okay, all in favor, let me know, raise your right hand. Okay, new business approval of the government window contract. And that's kind of makes you wonder what, when you first hear it, what world is that?
That's what I thought. I was like, what are we buying windows for?
Let's eat payment solutions to, where people can pay their taxes and their court fees and everything else. Why don't you tell me the percentage was a percent and a half, or what was it?
It depends on what you're paying as to what the percentage is. I think court was 4%, and if you're paying your utilities or your property taxes, it's 3%.
But now, they charge?
It'll go back to the consumer that uses.
They don't charge the city amounts of any.
Exactly. They provide you with the equipment and everything.
How are the funds dispersed to you there?
Directly to your bank account.
Direct to the account, to the account.
A lot of the local municipalities use this program. It just helps people that would like to pay their, their property taxes or whatever, because they're biggers, love sums, pay them with credit cards and stuff like that. Because right now, the only thing we do is checks and cash, so.
She still will continue doing checks and cash to you?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, Mike.
I'd like to make a motion for purposes of discussion that we approve the governor window contract.
Miranda, second?
I'll say.
Okay, the motion is second. All in favor, let me know, raise your right hand.
Any discussion?
Okay.
So, I'm ready to raise.
I'll approve it. All righty, approval of 2016 Welch Walker Associates. A motion to approve of the ballot?
I make a motion that we approve the Welch Walker Associates Auto Agreement Engagement Letter. It's presented under item 7B.
That will be at the same cost as last year.
I have a second.
There's a second. Okay, we have a motion to second?
That's a way.
All right, fire it.
Any further, any discussion? Do you like them to do it for several years and certainly capable?
Yes, Mike.
Oh, I'm ready to, ready to right hand. All right.
Smite's got a hot thing.
Yeah, I know. I see David's ready.
No, I'm dressed up? Okay, all in favor, let me raise your right hand. Okay, I'll approve. Okay, next, we have to discuss the police department. One thing we need, Miranda, I told you, one thing I think we need to discuss while we're, while we're going through here. We, we talked about that crosswalk up on, on Pickens or Pick, the street going down into Cherokee County, Pickens Street up through there. What we need to do there is just put signs up on each side that there's a crosswalk there. Just like we have, we've got other crosswalks up through there. We've been talking about. North south of Nelson down, that's a south city limits.
Where the stop bars are.
We approved last time.
Got you.
Figure if it gets.
Got to take it up.
Yeah. And if you haven't had any luck at all, we can take it up there.
Actually, the company that was going to do it, the contract with, they were going to come out next time they were in the area to look at it and figure out what they were going to do. They said it was their responsibility to pick it up, so.
Okay, but I would recommend that we just put up a crosswalk sign there. And those that are sort of sidewalk to up there, people walking down the sidewalk, they will pass the road safely there. And certainly should be able to left that, that, like they do with the other.
And we're going to have to make sure that we let them know so that we don't put the crosswalk signs and then they come through and paint over it.
Yeah, why don't you coordinate that with them, given the mayor's recommendations, see what they say?
Yeah.
And, and if we don't have the signs already, go ahead and order the sign. It'd be $150, $100. Okay, next, we have this one. Yes, Mike.
That's going to go on 7C.
Okay, discuss the police, oh, you are in the area, aren't you? Discuss the police department.
Kind of have rent.
I'd like to make a motion just for discussion purposes that we ask our city manager to look at alternatives and opportunities for us to move forward with the police in function in light of our police chief leading us.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Everybody have a motion to second? All in favor, let me know, raise your right hand.
We're discussing, I think.
That's what we want. That's what we want.
Okay, are we discussing?
I was ready, oh, but I mean, go ahead, discuss.
Of course, now.
Did you have any information or presentation, Miranda?
My position is you want to do what the police department.
No, I just, I, I need the council to provide me with direction as to if we are going to seek another full-time officer, another, maybe two part-time officers. another, maybe two part-time officers. I need you guys to provide me with some sort of direction.
Well, the part-time officer, we let go. We got much praise from citizens of the town talking about how much he was after.
And he went to Helen, Georgia, and he loves his new job.
Oh, he went to Helen?
No, Jake, really, no.
I'm sure he's fitting right in for Helen, because he, he...
They talk highly of her.
And, and so you discussed it with them, they don't want to part with it yet.
I do, I do.
They probably paid him a lot more than we paid him.
Well, things I have to discuss, like, I mean, things I have been thinking about in reference to this. Looking at what, in light of the sad state that our nation is in right now, with police officers getting shot left and right for no apparent reason. There's a lot of turnover in every police department everywhere, because, I mean, it, it's a scary time to be a, a police officer, unfortunately. And just looking at what other jurisdictions are paying, Pickens is hiring, Cherokee's hiring, they have, both have phenomenal benefit packages. They both start, I mean, even if their pay was lower than what we were currently paying, their benefit package more than makes work. We're just really gonna have to look into, how much are we willing to spend, who, you know? Like, looking in terms of if we attract somebody, we may attract someone who kind of is, and this is the demographic that kind of comes to mind. Someone that's single, that doesn't really need the benefits, but that kind of wants to work their way up in rank. This would be a great city to do it in, unfortunately, that means that we have the very real possibility that they'll go to chief school, they'll stay here six months or a year, and then boom, they get a job somewhere else and we're, we're doing this over and over again. So, one of the things that I, when I said to Miranda in terms of my thoughts on it, what are we, I mean, we're, we're gonna have to pay more, we're gonna have to offer benefits. I mean, there's a lot of things to take into consideration. I mean, it just seems like we're, every six months or so, it seems like we're hiring, rehiring, going through the interview process of it. I mean, I can understand, I wouldn't blame them, I don't know, there's just a lot to look into. It's a lot of, a lot of factors, I guess, to consider. Do I like having a Nelson police officer driving through my neighborhood, do I do? But at the same time, looking from a cost-effective perspective, and how can we, A, get somebody, and B, keep somebody? In the long term, that's something that we're gonna have to look into, and the cost, it's, you know, maybe by saving costs and other things, we can go ahead and put more money into that.
Well, why don't we, why don't we make a motion, does somebody make a motion to retable it for the time being? Just run about a police officer for a while, and see how it work out?
I mean, it's like I said, I'm not, I'm not saying that that's the definite route, but if you wanna try that perspective?
Well, I mean, that's, you know, we get, Cherokee, when you call nine-one-one, Cherokee County or Pickens County, respectively, have got to respond. I mean, that's, it's more, not more than one respond, or whatever.
But the problem that we have, Larry, which I believe, ma'am, you had that problem, where you called nine-one-one and they couldn't figure out?
The cop, the police officer who was down the street from me, didn't respond, or whatever. I, we had to have, have a ball ground, or sheriff department come out.
Cherokee County.
And that, and take a look at it. And their question was, you've got a police officer down there, why didn't he run up the street and find out? So, I, my question to you today was, I have not seen him, except, except the sheriff department has been going up and down our street at least once a day. And that's the most I have seen a police officer in that, forever. And I, in fact, I didn't think we had one, because the cars are always parked up here. And that, so... My thing is, is, you know, I, I believe this town is very safe, don't get me wrong. But if we, if we don't have a police officer, we don't even know when they work. I mean, who are you supposed to call?
Nine-one-one.
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 Yeah.
And...
I mean, anywhere, if you live in a place, like, if you live in Cherokee County...
I'd have great response with nine-one-one.
Yeah, if you don't live, I mean, if you don't live, like, in certain places, like in a town, in a jurisdiction, you have to call nine-one-one, because then they get a report whether, like, even if you're in Holly Springs, you call nine-one-one, and then they just, dispatch, dispatch, what's the word I'm looking for?
Dispatch.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and deal with it for us.
Can I just ask one question?
We're, we're gonna let you get up and make it, but we're gonna have somebody come up.
Well, this is just about the police department. Do we have to have a police department in the town to complete charter?
No.
Okay, that's all of them, no?
Okay. So let's...
Table it.
We need to give some direction, or what is it?
Well, that's, that's what I'm asking for, you want somebody to make a motion? Motion to table it, or?
Make a motion, we table it for the time being.
Okay, we have a motion that we table it, we have a second? Yeah, all in favor, let me know, raise your right hand. Okay, it's tabled for the time being. Okay, next, we have the public comment. Anybody like to make a public comment, please come up front, state your name, and proceed. Sure?
You did, to your channel four, Laura Lake Drive. Number one, I have to say again, Miranda, great job, great job. It's amazing how civil everything is, and it's running like clockwork. That's the way it should be, and always should be. And it's amazing that it's running very well. About the police, I think you should contemplate on eliminating the police department. You'll have that money. I don't think it's necessary. It is a very safe community, you have nine-one-one. I've had good experience with nine-one-one. They're, they're there like that. And I've just used it twice in ten years, but, I mean, I've, they've been good. And, and there was something else I wanted to say, and I forgot. But I think that you should contemplate on, on eliminating the, the police department. I think it's, it's not worth what you're putting into it in money. Maybe down the road, you know, they rose, if the city rose, or whatever. But, and it was a nice meeting.
Oh, we appreciate your comments. Anybody else?
Oh, what he said, I'm sorry, that's what I forgot. What he said about stripping the, you know, to save it, I think it's a, it's a waste, personally. What he said, he's right on that.
Well, I make a comment on the police department.
Yes, sir.
The, I've been living here in thirty-three years, and I've had two trucks towed here. And fifty scanning, done wonders for me. Called, and they come right out. So I think we have got pretty nice neighborhood here, and safety. We have few hoodlums here, want to race all night, blow out motorcycles and stuff. But, uh, the main reason why we're here in the night is, we bought a piece of property from City of Nelson back in two thousand thirteen. And we was under the impression that we could put a trailer over there, or build a house. And they said it was trailer wise, and they said you own a trailer across the street from it, and there's several other trailers up and down the road there. And they said we build a house, or a trailer, I prefer a house.
Who, who said that? That's the people, that's Miranda, I mean, Brandy, when she was here back when you, when you bought that, it tax sales, that correct?
Well, Brandy wouldn't want to say there's some man selling his tax, uh, his tax sales, or whatever, I don't know who he was. But they said it was trailer wise, and I told them, far as a trailer, you know, they're all right, but I prefer to build a house.
Right, well, that's wrong.
But now, I'm, I'm being told I cannot build a house over there, because I don't have an acre of land.
Who's telling you that?
Miranda, I come here to talk to Miranda about it. Matter of fact, I've got a permit to put a set tank in over there. Had a guy sitting up there getting ready to do it, and I got a work, stop work order. So, uh...
Do you issue the stop work order?
Yes, because his property is labeled, is zoned R forty. And without going through all the steps to get a variance or a zoning, to do the, the variance, you have to have almost an acre of land to be able to build anything on it.
Well, what we've got in Nelson, we've got many lots that are not, not acre, from this.
A few more that don't, and they are.
And there's, you know, a lot more, most of them, we've got some that's got quarter of an acre. Two tenths, three tenths of an acre. And have you, have you ever, have you done any good on trying to buy the other lot that's over there?
Well, I tried to, this woman behind us, she's a new woman, but she always wants to do channels, want, want to negotiate with. Our business, first I get back, or telephone number, I never go getting, I got a telephone number on the little lady, but phone's taking busy all the time, I don't know how this woman's talking to her.
And then that lady said that, the other day, she called me and said that she bought the land.
Is that Ms. Parker?
I don't know.
I mean, Ms. Darnell?
Yeah.
She, she's actually bought the property.
Well, we don't know that.
That's what she's saying, you know?
Well, you, you can certainly go to the Pickens County Tax Commissioner, direct to... Well, yeah, go up to the court courts office and research the deeds. And if you'd like some time, I'd run up there with you.
I'd appreciate it, because when I go up there, try getting deeds run, they said there's not, no deeds, no, no survey been done on the land. There's been some survey done on it, 'cause I found, to the upper.
Well, the original is, is, is number eight, one ninety, or something like that. And it's all tattered and everything, because it's been torn through so much.
But whenever...
That was the original survey that was done for the city of, or, at the direction of Georgia Marlowe Company. Of course, they own all the property here at that time, you know, and that's why you got houses, that's building all these small lots. But, you know, the, if you'd like, you know, I could set up a time where you'd go up there and, and determine whether or not, which, you know, I think, I think Ms. Darnell, you know, Ms. Darnell would probably tell me if she thought. I don't, she was trying to buy. I have discussed it with her, she, she was trying to buy, and she liked to have both of them, because she lived next door to it. But I mean, you, you know, you bought the one for that.
Well, my objection is, I've been here in this here town, well, not my objection, but, well, my point of view is, I've been living here for thirty-three years around this town, and there's a house over on that land, when I first moved here. And Lester Smith lived the one down behind it, his, his mother lived up in the upper one, because she died.
His, really, yeah, his, his, his wife's mother's one, I think, that's where, where, who owned it originally. But now, they just moved off and left it, and, you know, that's why that thing deteriorated like it did. Finally got toward just, we had to tear it down. But, you know, between the two lots, I think, you know, there, there would be room enough to build. And you might have a very, very good case to build one back on, on that lot.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, because the lady that went out, when, when we was getting, when we get the permit for the...
Set tank.
Set tank, she said in the nice place for a house. And it was already a big house.
Which we're gonna have to...
Half acre's a lot.
It's two or three tenths of an acre.
Yes, I agree.
Is it a, yeah, it's, it's...
Four point three.
Four.
Point four three.
Point four three, yes.
The county has got four and six acres.
Right, but, the, I'd say City of Nelson, they've got, see, this is, I guess it's three tenths of an acre. But, City of Nelson's got a lot of houses that are all, you know, the way they, way they did it, that, you know, are, are less than, than a half acre. And most jurisdictions try to work with the people who are up there.
Some of these, when in, a lot of them up there don't have acres. I was wondering how that's tripped about. Well, I had people up there, I said, didn't y'all sell a permit way down there? And they said, yeah, we sold a permit.
But we had, you know, Pickens County really adopted the zoning until, I think it was two thousand five, or, you know, I can't remember the date. So, the, at any rate, you know, that would be something that the council would have to decide, you know, if they want it. And I don't have a vote on the council, but I mean, you know, if the council chose to, to not issue your permit, that'd be up to the council to decide. And probably what we need to do is, you want to bring it up at the work session, or, I suppose people want to do it. What kind of second permit they give you?
What kind of second? I didn't know it was going to happen.
For a high, a high bed room house you're buying a building?
Uh, two bedrooms.
You got your second permit with you?
I got, I got a copy of it. The guy that we contracted with, the, due to permit, so, the dig, he got to read them.
Now, have you, have you looked into?
Just for a mobile home, or is it for a, a section about thirty, or?
It's still a house, or, either.
It can't be mobile unless it gets rezoned, because it's R forty.
It's R thirty, yeah, that was the other issue.
It's gonna be a zoning issue. Sixty by forty, you're talking about twenty-four hundred square foot house?
Sixty by thirty.
Or sixty by thirty is eighteen hundred feet, square house?
Yeah.
Square foot house?
How wide is that?
It's a hundred foot.
How, how wide was it?
Remember? How wide is it?
How wide was the lot? Lot, uh, I, I marked all from the edge of road, somebody told me, you're supposed to go from the center of road over, over thirty foot, forty foot, up to that house. But I went to the edge of the road, marked over, what's that paper, that's a...
Twenty-five feet.
The twenty-five feet was on the back lot, on the back side of the lot. It was thirty or forty foot off the, off the road, over. And in between, in between the states that I drove, from the side of the road over to the back lot, back over twenty-five foot, I had, uh... There's enough room to build a house there, I know it.
Pardon?
There's enough room there to build what I would build.
Are you gonna take that stump out back there?
Yeah, I am.
It's one of the test and stump.
You know, Pickens cost me a thousand dollars to get tricked at it. And, uh, I'm gonna take that out, but there's a gas line, and that's another thing, they do, they mark from the road to the meter. But there's a gas line going up straight across that property, and I don't know if it's abandoned or not, I don't know.
It probably goes to the houses back there behind it.
Across that lot?
Yeah, back when they, when the gas company came in, you know, everybody was so glad to get, you know, natural gas, that, you know, that pretty well...
If that be the case, then they ought to market if it serves.
Well, they, they will market.
They said they would.
My gas company told they wouldn't market.
And water company couldn't ban it, because there were two, two meters on that lot.
Right, well, that's for the houses back behind it.
Well, they would, but they wouldn't up in there to that meter. They were just abandoned, and they thought it was an abandoned water line. And the guy that I had doing the set tank, when he pulled it back, and he found a tire on it, he's a novice at gas lines. He stopped digging immediately.
So what is, mayor? Yes? Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
So what are you asking of us?
I need permit bill, permit to proceed.
It's a zoning question, though, I think.
Yeah, basically, but there's already a house there, my argument, why, why would they can't get down? You can't down the stream once it's already open and running. You come in here and block it off, but I can't. You come in here and block it off, because I can't, I can't create another half acre. Can't buy something I can't get.
Yeah, you're gonna have to comply with the, you know, the zoning questions.
Yeah, well, what is, David, the owner of that, own that property? That's where the old farmer house was. And then, uh, had the house behind it. And, uh, was abandoned, mess, dropped down, then he took both of them.
They separated it all up or something?
Yeah, there, there was two lots there. And originally, the road, Raymount Road originally did not come, that, that, you know, where Cub, Cub's house is?
Yeah.
It came between Cub's house and Muniz's house back there, Muniz Stevens' house. That's where Raymount Road was, prior to them doing, rewrapping Raymount. Which, you know, one time, they had a big golf course, where they had eight, nine old golf courses at their, for Georgia Marble Company, at that time.
That's where my family, the fisherman's.
It's where you could see, it's where it all worked on.
Yes, Mike. So, to respond to this inquiry, their inquiry, it looks to me like it's a zoning issue, and they need to decide if they want to bring a variance question to the city, or, or a change in this zoning ordinance to allow it. And that's really what I, that's my, well, I asked my city attorney, what, where are we at here? What, what's needed next to respond?
They need to seek a variance or rezoning. If they don't have the appropriate amount of land, it have to be a variance or a zoning issue brought before the council, and the council would act as the zoning board, and then making a decision on whether to grant it or not.
So, have you got a package to provide?
I, I gave you one, didn't I, one of the zoning packages?
Yeah, you need to fill out that zoning, uh, variance request, and present it to, to her, and we'll, uh, we'll have it in the new course as far as the council meetings. So, uh, we'll, uh, just see how it goes, but, uh...
So, we only pay for the, uh, permit, and I don't get the money back on that, so...
Well, and, and that's, that's true, but, uh, and I, you know, I'm not saying that we got, we're gonna approve it or disapprove it, you know, the council members and all people has a vote. And, uh, you know, we have, we have two council seats vacant right now. And I haven't, we haven't had, we haven't had anybody qualify yet, have we?
No, not at all.
Tell me, I'm a voter.
Uh, you know, we've got two seats, that's gonna be coming up for replacement in the November elections, but, uh, you know, if you put it forward, if you properly prepare, and you might want to get an attorney to, and I'm not saying you gotta get an attorney, but if you want to get an attorney to properly prepare the variance, uh, request, uh, it might, might be to your advantage. But, you know, whatever you decide to do, if you, if you get, and bring it in and provide it to the city, the council will deal, will deal with it in due course.
All right. And another thing about that site, and I was talking about it earlier, uh, the reason why I said it wouldn't be worth it while, to try and save it, because I deal with it stuff for it, and I wish I dealt with it before, I got a hook for it. I got, you can be weed eating, throw a rock over, bust a hole inside of it, and that storm come, and I put mine on there about ninety-six, something, something like it. And that storm come, blow half of it off, so I had another guy come, get my automobile to take it down, because you gotta start coughing, come all the way down before it damages, and then put it all back together. So, I gave him my automobile to straighten all that up, and, but, yeah, the sun done got to it, and cracked, and popped, and broke, so, I know it's not hardly worth the effort to even try to save it.
Well, we appreciate your, your input on that, though. After, you know, when we, when we dealt with that, we certainly appreciate you.
And another thing, too, about that, uh, down here in Holdwood, it's flooded. And we didn't have a problem, that thing flooded, went after, uh, they cluttered down, it was open. The Ted went in there and buried a pipe in there, a drums or something. And when it closed it up, to a hole about less big around, compared to a hole this big around. And that started, uh...
Right, and let me tell you what he's talking about there, it was, when the state highway came up through here, they, they, they did their engineering, and, you know, they built culverts, where culverts had to be, there was a creek down there, a little branch, and, and it carried the Georgia Marble Company waste down through there. And what he's saying is, that back when, when Ted Klein was the mayor of the City of Nelson, he owned two houses right there along, on that street that where the flood took place. And he had a bunch of dirt hauled in, and, and made that bank. The banks used to be like this, on both sides of the, of the highway, when they first built the highway, I mean, it was treacherous. If you got offside of the road, you know, you, you gone into a hole. He sloped it back toward where the community center is now. And he put, and it does have a, a, a full culvert, it's got a, uh, it's got a thirty inch, I think, culvert. And he cut it into the drain pipe that comes, we've got a actual video of it, of that pipe coming into the one that comes out of the mill, or comes from the, from this road, road up here. And, you know, it's actually cut into that pipe that was there. So, it's not steel drums, it is a, it is a culvert. But it has been crushed on the end, uh, many times, plus it's got two drains that cut into the side of it, coming from somewhere up on the property that he did own there, which, I don't know what they are, but, uh, at any rate, uh, you know, we, we need to look very carefully at that, at what we do with it down there, or we're gonna spend a whole lot of money. Appreciate your input.
I own that one down, regardless.
I know you did, you own, you own both houses there.
And the trailer.
Yep, and the trailer burned, there was a double lot down there between, uh...
It was a single one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a single one, right.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir, appreciate you input. Anybody else like to make some comments, or make some suggestions, or, yes, Mike?
Can I ask you? I had no concrete, I, I had no idea that you had a dumpster, that you were taking garbage or whatever. And, uh, and, uh, I just happened to run up that street, and it said the dumpster's full, which made me think we must have had a dumpster for people to throw stuff away. My, my concern is, is, or, my question is, when, when you do something like that, can you not put a reader board out or something, or an email? Do we not have email? I don't go to the post office, my mail's delivered. So, you know, can you not hit an email thing for all of us and say, we have a dumpster, this is where, you know, it's located, and you can throw away your garbage so that all of us know that? Not just, not just the council people, or the people that are right in this area? I don't stop here and read your, uh, whatever you've got going on the door. And, uh, is there, is there a better way to communicate with us?
Well, there is better ways, we probably need to, to, uh...
Can we not email?
There is a website, which, uh, you know...
I, I've been updating our website frequently. If you, if you get online, you can look at our website, keep up with, um, the latest news on there. But I, I would be more than happy to take your emails, so we can start sending stuff out. That's a good idea, just start doing that.
Anytime you send a council meeting notice, anybody that wants an email, you know, we'll just add you to it.
It just seems like we're not all informed on what's going on. Maybe we'd get more people to come in, you know, to, to the council meetings.
Yes, Mike.
Uh, you're right, we, this was sort of a test run, uh, would it be received, and...
Well, they've done this for years.
I know they have, and so we kind of restarted it up, and, uh, it clearly was not notified in advance. We, we need to get the message out in advance when we're gonna do it, so people can start gathering their stuff and know that it's coming. And we, we do recognize that, we've talked about it, and so, it's, and when we do our next one, we're definitely gonna have a more significant communication effort to try to, because it's obvious, even when we didn't tell people, we still filled up two dumpsters, to the top and over. So, there's, it's probably one of the better, uh, received services that the city does for your taxpayer dollars. So, we, we will do a much, much better job, and you're right on point, that it wasn't, it wasn't done well, but...
We probably need to do it every three or four months for a while.
That would be nice, that would be nice. I mean, we had a reader board at one time, when the, the other police officer, he used it for, you know, was talking about his run and stuff like that, that sat out on the, um...
Yeah, but that's probably...
Turnoff.
Fire department, uh, that belonged to the fire department.
Well, I'm sure they let us use it.
Oh, yeah, they will, yes.
And there's a lot of ways for us to...
Kind of make us feel like part of this, not just that we all pay taxes, that we get some of the benefits, too.
Yep, I agree. All righty, anybody else like to put your input into it? Okay, I guess we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I think a motion that we adjourn.
Say, we have a motion to second, all in favor, that, that, you're right. Unanimous?
We're adjourned.